Hi, everyone. My name is Elizabeth A. Kersmore. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm calling this public meeting to order at 7:00 PM. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded. Following the presentation by the applicant for which I will allow the town planner or the applicant to share the screen if they wish to make their own presentation, the board will ask the applicant questions. Following this, I will ask for public comment. Consistent with the Select Board's Temporary Policy Directive and Guidelines for Public Meeting and Public Hearings conducted via remote participation due to COVID-19 state of emergency, the public is invited to view the meeting as an attendee only and will not be permitted video access. If an attendee has a question during the public comment period for each application, they can use the question and answer function or the raise hand star nine. I always forget to start.
Yeah.
So this is not a webinar.
So it is only just a regular Zoom meeting. So there is no question and answer function. So people can use the raised hand during public comment, use the raise hand function, and then people will be unmuted and allow video access to ask their question.
Great. Okay, at this time, let me ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Kinderman's?
Present.
Mr. Fayah?
Here.
And Ms. A. Kersmore here. All right, let's get going with our 7 o'clock Commons and Newbury LLP. Who is presenting for that application?
Um, I am not sure if they can raise their hand. I will.
That 18 Windmill?
No, Hill Road for special permits.
So it should be the Tom and Vicky Everts or Tom Bowell.
Okay.
I talked to Vicky yesterday.
So. Hello.
Okay, there you are.
Yeah. It's Tom Everts. I mean, I'm here.
We're both here.
Okay, great. Are you, you're presenting?
Yes, I mean, basically, we're looking to build a new house and, uh, and tear down our, you know, part of our existing house and do an accessory dwelling unit in the, uh, in the remains of the existing house.
Elizabeth, do you want to bring up the plans?
Sure. Do you want to start with the plot plan or?
Let's start with the plot plan.
All right.
Just so we can get ourselves situated.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
All right. There's Windmill Hill. Okay, great. So existing house over here to the left. Can you just show, so Windmill Hills over here, the cemetery, can you, can you show that with your cursor there?
The cemetery is down here.
Nice. The proposed house and the existing house with the second floor to be removed, correct? And then an accessory dwelling unit of, can you tell me how big this accessory dwelling unit you're proposing is?
Uh, 750 square feet, almost exactly.
Okay, 750 square feet, a studio of some sort in there as well?
Yep.
And three-car garage and storage?
That's correct. And then there's going to be a studio, uh, which is, you know, just basically an open room for, you know, sort of a recreation room.
So, um, the total square feet of that entire building is going to be 1,700, is that right? With 750 being the accessory?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the new house we're looking at, I know you sent new numbers, didn't you, Elizabeth? But was it 40, the new house?
Forty-three and change, I think.
Forty-three and change.
It's actually 4576.
Forty-five, yeah, 45.
Forty-five, 76. Okay. Um, I guess my first question is for you, Elizabeth and Ray, which is, you're calling something an accessory use. At what point can you just section off things and say like, this is a rec room, this is storage, and not include it in the accessory use? And still have it be beneath that thousand-foot?
If you look at the floor plans, the additional dwelling unit is self-contained. You know, the doors lead to the outside. You can't get to the studio from the additional dwelling unit. So based, I, where I look at is either the people accessory dwelling unit probably has access to it, then so does the homeowner. So, I mean, if you look at the floor plan of the additional dwelling unit, you can't get into that studio area. So if the homeowner wanted to, they could prevent that, you know, if they were renting it, they could stop anybody from getting in there.
And then is that studio, sorry, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Oh, so, um, the, the only question that I had was, so the, there's one set of plans for the accessory dwelling unit and another set of plans for what they're now calling the pool house. And I think, oh, sorry, this was brought to their attention. Let me see. Oh, okay. The one question that I would, I was having is if somebody could tell me what the difference is between the dark lines and the the lighter lines, are those windows?
Those are, those are existing partitions.
No, so this, so this line right here is dark.
Yeah.
Black, and then there's a lighter section. And over here, the same thing.
Yep, that's a doorway opening.
This is a doorway opening?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is opposite of what Ray was talking about. So one set of plans is showing a doorway and another set of plans is not.
Well, that, that doorway is an existing doorway that is to be closed up.
So I don't, I don't think this is material to anything, Elizabeth, but my, my problem is, is that you have two sets of plans that are not the same.
Well, the point was that it was only after the ADU was approved that we went ahead and had the ADU designed. And we decided to have the ADU designed by a local architect who had a relationship with Ray Matty so that, you know, we could sort of, uh, you know, have him semi-working with Ray in order to be able to develop an ADU that he would find acceptable. Is that, is that pretty much tell it the way it is, Matty? Ray?
Well, I was going to mention that you do have two architects working on this project. I think that's what created the difference. I, I've been looking at Marshall McLean's floor plan is what I'm thinking that's getting approved tonight. So I think the two plans do make it a little difficult for the board to.
Let, let me ask the board what questions you have. Jim, are you?
I had a question about the setbacks because it looks like for the new house, there's two corners that go over the line. Uh, and I, I think there's some sort of height issue where it's not a problem for the one at the top, but I wasn't sure about the one at the bottom. I don't know if Ray, you'd have a.
For the proposed house? So, I mean, so setbacks of 15 and 15 on the sides. You get as close as 12 if you have 18 or greater on the other side. But he is in residence space, so where that area where he's borrowing, there is a 15-foot height restriction.
Okay, so he's under the 15 feet on both the top and the bottom where it's, where it's on the line?
To be honest with you, Robbie, I didn't even really look at that because right now he's going for the special permit for the, to go for the FAR. And new house really, well, I guess it is part of the project. But I honestly, I didn't look at the height.
Well, okay, so looking at now, it looks like, Robbie, you're right that there, there's a setback issue here. I will say that I think that it would be impossible to look at this application without looking at both, all this whole building project as one thing. I don't know if my board members agree with that, but I, to me, I'm not looking at it as accessory dwelling unit. And then this other thing, this is 6,000-something square feet. I think it needs to be looked at as a whole on this lot. Comments?
I, I don't.
I'm looking at it one, as one poll as well. I agree.
Correct. I, I don't disagree with that. The other thing, and it might not be in our purview, but what, what struck me was the, on just the site plan, and you all know that that's where I gravitate to typically, is that the, when it's all as one project, the addition of all the impervious area, you know, between the gravel driveway being paved and a big drop-off new house. And I'm not seeing any stormwater management. And I think, you know, that's, that's something that, that I think is, is important to at least touch upon.
We, uh.
From the applicant.
For what it's worth, we have done some major stormwater runoff mitigation. Um, we, um, you know, installed a very large drywall just to the south of the existing swimming pool. We have another recharge system that's down in front of the existing house where, just on the north side where it says gravel driveway. And we also have a, um, a drywall system that's set up right at the, at the very top on the east, uh, on the west side of the property. So, I mean, we, we have done a lot in that respect. You know, the, the stormwater runoff. And we can provide you with, you know, the details of everything that we've done.
That, that would be nice, nice if there would be a civil, civil engineered plan for this.
Yeah, I agree. And, and it's. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, that's especially since you're on the top of the hill, right?
Right, it's a, I was going to say, it's a tricky lot.
Right.
And I guess we would need more information on that. And then, well, let me finish taking questions from the board. Any other questions? Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, can I, can I go back to the, the issue that was raised about the setbacks? Because I'm just, now I'm, I didn't really focus on it before. And I'm just perplexed because we do have some lines there that seem to be exceeded by the house itself. Could you just walk me through that one more time, Ray or somebody about?
Yeah, so the side setbacks in town in all residential districts are 15 and 15 on either side.
Right.
But you can get as close as 12 on one side if you're 18 or greater on the other. So I believe it's 13 feet. Screen's kind of small, but, so, but what I did not look at, being in the residence B, he can only be, the, the structure can only be 15 feet tall in that area that he's borrowing. So from that two feet to 13 to the 15 feet, he's got a height restriction. And maybe if we looked at the elevations of the house, we could tell, but honestly, I didn't look at that.
And I believe it's way less than, um, 15 feet. See it right there is, uh, on the right-hand side of what you're looking at is 111. And what is that, 103? So that's, uh.
I'm seeing, uh, I can't read that number. Can anyone else? It's, uh.
So, so Tom, it's the garage that's in that section where you're borrowing?
That's it, right there. You see where the, uh, the downspout is on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Right now, you're looking at the east elevation. So it's the north elevation that is the issue. So right where that downspout is, you see where it says nine foot six? Up to the eve line? And, and if you go all the way up, it goes to elevation 115 at the knee wall, second floor. So it wouldn't be higher than that. And 103 from 115, that's 12 feet.
I think this needs to be investigated a little bit more because this is showing from finished grade. And that's not how the height will be measured. So I think this is something that needs to be looked at a little bit more and not, and offline. Um, you know, the applicant can work with Ray on that. I'd also probably suggest that the board schedule a site visit.
And also the accessory use, a question that you brought up before, Elizabeth, I think should also be investigated because the whole point of the 750 feet is that they can't just open up into another much greater space, right? So if those existing doors are staying, that's an issue.
They're, they're definitely not staying.
Okay, so we just need to see that. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Elizabeth, that offline, these issues can be looked at. But I do, I would suggest we do a site visit. Other question? Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, just to cough, but, but I had the same, I had the same issues that I think that, I appreciate that the applicant here is intending to have the accessory use cut off from the other one. It's just that, that while we're also getting a site visit done and, and dealing with the height, it'd be good to make sure that our records show, you know, the one plan that are, that are the current plans so that we just don't have that question for later. I, I think that's a housekeeping measure more than anything else.
Um, so without those issues kind of being looked at and the plans kind of being more, I don't know, these, these issues being corrected, I'm a little bit wary of going ahead into discussing the merits of this before we do a site visit. I don't know if people.
Don't we want to hear from public people if anyone?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm, before we open it, I didn't know if anyone wanted to comment anymore on.
I, I sort of have one other question, which is, you know, the bylaw provisions about of 713 and 715 where we're talking about granting a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure. I mean, there's a totally new structure being built here that's not connected to existing structure. Are we still comfortable that that's kind of a reconstruction?
Oh, my gosh, Robbie, you're like, this was the fight I got in my first night on the zoning board. Okay. I was like, one wall needs to be kept. How is this a reconstruction? And then everyone told me, correct, Elizabeth, you sent me a whole bunch of case law on this, actually. This was a couple of years ago now, so I.
Well, I'm glad this has been raised and answered. I.
Oh, no, everyone was so. Robbie, so I'm glad that you're saying it now. Elizabeth, we went through this whole legal analysis, didn't we?
Um, so I'm, well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what the question is, though.
It's, it's not, so I think the issue is, are you reconstructing a building when you're just building a whole nother house? So the whole point is you're reconstructing or what are the words, Robbie?
Reconstructing, extending, or, you know, altering an existing non-conforming structure.
So what is, what, um, and maybe Ray can answer this question. I've been a little preoccupied with planning board stuff right now. What is, what is the non-conformity for the property?
Frontage. Frontage, right? Yes, I think it has 34.63. Plenty of area.
Well, I think, Robbie, you know, we might have learned this in the same property law class, probably. But, right, like keeping a wall so that you're still technically reconstructing and you're just, even if you're not really keeping any more of the structure? That's kind of.
I, I think they are keeping enough of the existing structure, but the, the new house doesn't seem to really be a reconstruction of the existing house. But I, you know, I, I just want to make sure we have the special permit authority here because, you know, the bylaws sort of talks about in the language of reconstruction versus.
So, Robbie, when, mostly it's that when the builder comes into zoning board appeals to construct a new house and they go on over the FAR, what they're doing is it demolishing the existing house and building new. There was actually, I think, a court case, Nick Boyd was involved in a house he was building. And remember, Elizabeth, you had to come up and get, um, history of all the zoning board appeals that, um, we issued to build new houses. Because that's the way, that's the way town had been interpreting it for years. Reconstruction was a new house.
Yeah, that's my recollection.
Yeah, Robbie, it's an interpretation. I was exactly, I think, where you are uncomfortable with it, but that's how it's been interpreted. And I'm pretty sure Elizabeth.
That makes sense. If you raised the existing house and put the new house up, you'd be, you'd be under the reconstruction sort of language. And if you leave a piece of the existing house up, actually, you know, to your wall example, Elizabeth, you're actually better off. So, okay, I, I'm fine. I just wanted to work through that.
Thanks for justifying, though, when I did the same exactly years ago. Oh, my God. All right, all right. Um, so beyond that, Robbie, did you have any other points? We can open it up, otherwise. So, all right, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anything, Elizabeth?
Nope. If, if somebody wants to make a public comment, they just need to hit the raised hand function.
Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and close public comment. Um, so getting back to what I said before, I guess I would say we should schedule a site visit if that is okay with the applicant.
Problem.
Okay, great. Elizabeth, do you want to send out something or should we?
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll have Heather send out, um, send out something.
Um, okay, great. And then continue this until, when is our next meeting?
January 14th.
January 14th.
So there's already two items on the agenda, so this could be on for, um, 7:10.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the Commons and Newbury LLP application for a special permit on the section 713, 715, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw. To demolish a, a almost 2,000-square-foot structure or of, of the existing 3,675-square-foot dwelling and convert it into an accessory structure and to construct a new 4,585-square-foot dwelling at, on a non-conforming lot at 18 Windmill Hill Road to the meeting on January 14th at 7:15?
7:10.
7:10.
Very good.
All right, all in favor, Mr. Kinderman's?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. A. Kersmore, aye. Great, so, um, yeah, Elizabeth or Heather will be in touch to set up that site visit. Thanks, thanks for that.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, moving on to 7:05, Concord Country Club for special permit. Who is here from Patrick Cleary? Is that you? No, wait, Patrick Cleary is West Concord. Who's?
That's me, Paul Kerchner from Stampstein McNairy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think you can because you're responding. So, um, I'm from Stampstein McNairy. We are the engineers for this project. We submitted an application for an earth removal special permit to allow for the construction of an irrigation pond. So most of you look very familiar to me. So you may remember that we had submitted a very similar application in the spring just before, uh, everything changed in the world. But, um, in any case, uh, during that process, town staff had advised us to withdraw so we could hammer down some issues. So we did, and now we've resubmitted. So the country club is working to upgrade their irrigation system. As part of that, they would like to construct a pond to act as a storage reservoir to serve that irrigation system in order to increase efficiency. Back in January, they did begin work on this project and they were told to stop so that we could obtain the necessary permits. So in any case, um, the, the construction of this irrigation pond is, requires a good deal of earthwork just to, to build a shape that, uh, that, that works, that, that fits into the topography in order to provide the storage capacity needed to really serve its purpose. Since the last time we submitted this application and even since we originally resubmitted this application back in September, we have revised the plan so that we are now no longer pursuing the removal of additional material and only here to permit the removal of material that has already occurred. Prior to the stopping of work, they had removed about 1,200 cubic yards of material which exceeds the threshold of 1,000 cubic yards, after which you need a special permit. So we are here to hopefully receive the permit to allow that additional 200 cubic yards of earth removal. Last week, we did meet with some town staff from the engineering department and Public Works or Water and Sewer, to be more specific, to make sure that we can properly address some of the comments that they've made at that meeting. Justin Richardson, who's the Assistant Town Engineer, raised concerns about our proximity to the, the estimated seasonal high groundwater table. As a result, we did submit another revised plan. It's a very minor change. Realistically, if you had the two plans next to each other, you probably couldn't tell the difference because we're only off by about three inches. But in any case, we are here to ask for the special permit for the earth removal only. We are not asking for any special permit for work in the groundwater conservancy district, although as we are in the groundwater conservancy district, that is, uh, is certainly pertinent to our application. There are some outstanding comments from Water and Sewer and Natural Resources that we are working on addressing. And we are still waiting on the complete review from engineering for the compliance with rules and regs within the groundwater conservancy district and also compliance with town standards for the proposed stormwater management's system. But with that, I guess I'll open it up to questions. I can dive a little bit deeper into the application and maybe the why we believe this special permit is, is justified. But I, I would prefer to let the board lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let me kind of summarize where I think we stand. When you mentioned the groundwater conservancy district, I think it's 100% relevant and we need to look at it for our permit granting authority because we're not allowed to grant what you wanted us to grant before since you were within four feet of the high ground water mark, right? So in my mind, we are completely really tied up with the other boards and what they say about this. Last time they said to us, you can't even vote on this and they're not even going to consider it because it wasn't even allowed under the zoning bylaw. I haven't heard anything comment, Elizabeth, quote, correct me if I'm wrong, from other boards on this revised application, which, um, so I, I see what you're saying, but I guess I don't agree with it. Board members?
To answer, um, question of the revised material was only submitted a few days ago and has not been reviewed by staff. I did, um, so until Concord Public Works Engineering Division reviews the material and confirms, um, you know, it is in the groundwater conservancy district and issues have been raised about the impact to the town's water supply. But you also need to. But you also need to confirm that the project's no longer within four feet of seasonal high groundwater. And the comment that I received from the public works director is that he did have a conversation with the applicant and informed him that uh Concord Public Works still needs additional information relating to the potential impacts on the town's drinking water supply with sufficient time for town staff to review that. And once they deem it complete, they will put it on the agenda for the public works commission, um, which is meeting on January thirteenth to provide a recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
So, yeah, just a question. I just want to follow up, make sure I totally understood that. So I'm gathering that this is, I mean, this application is sort of premature on several levels, not the least of which is that we don't have, didn't receive information sufficient time to review it and there's actually still information missing, right? So, um, so I guess that, so I guess the 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 real question I have for the applicant is why we, why we're not, why is not here asking for continuance until such time as that information can get there? But I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I'm the I'm the applicant. My name is Gregson Carter, although my wife's name's up there, but it's really is Gregson Carter from Concord Country Club. And we wanted to, we wanted to come because we had continued the last couple of meetings and we wanted to, we wanted to let the committee know that we had been working and we're trying to work with the town uh to resolve the issues. We did revise the plan. I noticed on the applica- on the on the agenda for tonight, it had the nineteen thousand cubic yards of material which we're not removing any longer. We've rebalanced the site. So we are not going to be removing any material off the property. Uh, we are working with the DPW on on the water. Uh, we have worked with engineering and there were two two minor issues. And again, one was because of three inches and and it was just really the location of of something on the plan. So we are moving forward. We we wanted to to also find out if there were any other issues. I know, like I said, we we had things last year and then we continued it. Uh, and we wanted to hopefully come back in January. We do know that we're on a you know, the winter timeline and a little bit of a tight schedule. So we're trying to to work out all these details beforehand. So that's why we felt that if we came and at least let you know we are working on it and uh see if there were any other issues that we needed to resolve from a committee point of view.
So I guess I understand the question, but my issue is that we're kind of just waiting on the kind of decision of whether the threshold has even been met for a permit that we could grant. If we decide that that is true, that there is a permit we could grant, there are a number of conditions under seven point five point three, which we haven't even considered yet as a board. And I'm not sure if the board is willing um to go through those now, since we haven't even received comment from engineering or anyone else. I would argue that we wait for that and then proceed from there.
Yeah, I can can I maybe I missed it, but can somebody explain to me why, you know, this project still i- is in the groundwater conservancy district, but you are and you don't work in that groundwater conservancy district? Why isn't a special permit applied for under that uh bylaw?
Why isn't it?
Correct.
It because we were not allowed to grant that special permit if they were within four feet of the historical high groundwater level. And they were until they revised this application. So
But do they then they do they then still need a special permit?
The earth removal, they're asking for us to retroactively approve the twelve hundred eight square feet that they already removed. Sorry, cubic yards.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry to be.
I guess I don't understand your question.
I have the same question as Theo. It's it it seems there are certain uses permitted under the groundwater conservancy by law where you don't need a special permit, so you don't have to come to us for that. And if they're within those uses, I think Theo, you're asking, is that the case that they that what they're doing in the groundwater conservancy district does not require a special permit?
Right, right, right.
What civic section?
Let me that's a section.
Seven point six point four uses permitted in the groundwater conservancy district without review by the board.
Go ahead.
So if if they're within seven point six point four, then you know, I'm not sure there's a groundwater conservancy issue before us as a board.
I think Robbie, I'm sorry, I'm just asking which which used I'm pulling up the full zoning by law now, but which use do you think they're falling under?
I I don't know. I I would look to the to the applicant to.
Well, our our intention, our intent, I'm sorry, to help clear it up. Our intention, originally, we were in there and we had to go through that when we when we went back and looked. In order to alleviate this and take this out of this area is to do the to be come above the groundwater conservancy, which we have done on that plan that was submitted and unfortunately you haven't had a chance to look at it, review it, but and that's what Justin and and the town engineers are looking at. Is to be above that, which would then alleviate that, where you would have to deal with that because we would be outside that jurisdiction.
So I I think the different question they're asking, and when I reviewed that section and I I'm happy to hear if I missed it, I didn't see where they were in in a by right permitted uh use. Elizabeth?
They a private recreation is not a by right use. No, it's by special permit.
So there's the answer to your question, Theo and Robbie. I think they're not within seven point six as a by right. Which means to what you were saying, what the applicant was saying, the four foot uh out of the four foot high water elevation, um, historical high water mark is only what then allowing us to grant removal of more than one thousand cubic yards.
Correct.
So now that they've already removed more than one thousand cubic yards, they're asking us to retroactively go back and approve that. What engineering said before is you're not even allowed to prove it the way it was applied for. So I guess what I'm waiting for is for engineering to come back and say, yeah, we agree they are without out of that um four feet. And again, I do think this is tied to bigger issues that are going on on the site, so I would be interested in hearing from the other boards. Did I summarize that correctly, Elizabeth? Great. Robbie and Theo, does that clear up what you were saying?
But once that's cleared up, are they, are we going to be asked to grant a special permit for the for the use within the groundwater conservancy district?
Elizabeth, that's a question.
No, so um not under, no, I do not believe um the only preservat- the only point in the groundwater conservancy district would be um the project's impact on the public water supply under the purpose, but there is no specific identified use. So it would fall back to um the the use, the expansion of the recreational use requires a special permit in this zone district. Um, so it would be an earth removal special permit and reviewing the project and its impact under the special permit section. So I believe that is why, although it may not be under the groundwater conservancy district, the applicant is continually to work with Concord Public Works to address the issue to the town's water supply.
Okay, so now I think I have it. So so they were asking for a special permit. Let's assume for the moment they were asking for a special permit under the to expand the recreational use. And it ran into a problem because it was in the groundwater conservancy district and it was showing a plan that was or it was believed that it was within four feet of the groundwater. In which case that would sort of knock it out entirely from being able to be dealt with by our board because it was a like it's a minimum requirement.
It's prohibited.
Prohibited. And then and in addition, there was this issue of the earth. So now we're back into a place where they are striving, the country club is striving to fix the groundwater conservancy problem. And if they can do that, then we are now left with a special permit for extending the recreational use of which the groundwater conservancy district is really not a part of it once that's been cleared up. And for dealing with the earth removal, the the two hundred additional yards of earth removal that was not permitted.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
All that being said, I don't think we're in a position to vote on anything.
No, we're we're not asking that for tonight as well. We're we're hoping for next month as well to come back, but we just wanted to update everybody on what we were doing. Because I think, like I said, when you look at the agenda and you look at everything, there's a little bit of uh disinformation. We wanted to make sure everybody was and 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 find out also, make sure everybody was clear, but also to find out if there was any other issues uh that we need to be aware of. You know, because again, we just think, yeah, it's the it's the extra two hundred cubic yards that was additionally that was removed and we're not sure how the committee is going to want to want to handle that or or address it.
And Elizabeth, when you were talking about the special permit conditions or what what we standards, I still go back to the seven point five point three is what we need to look at for the earth removal. Which again, we haven't discussed, which talked about things about you know, if things are injurious to the abutters, if the alteration of existing topography, things like that are involved with this. So I don't know if you can really separate this out from the rest of what's going on.
Um, I I think ultimately, probably um town staff will work with, you know, review the plans that were recently submitted and work with the applicant at least for the the earth removal side of it and um looking whether, you know, particular restoration is needed and, you know, like, you know, the natural resources may want certain restoration in one area. So that will be something that we'll look at as we review these plans that were submitted. Um, and then the other the other after the fact impacts. You know, I think I think that's something different. I mean, there is going to be, you know, there is going to be no more trucking off the site. Um, you know, it's the earth removal is going to, from what I understand, balanced onsite. Um, but it it's it it's going to be challenging to separate the both, but I don't think it's impossible.
Okay.
I I think ultimately what it will be will be you minor issues as far as the earth removal. Um, and it will be more the special permit findings and the conditions um just dealing with the project itself.
Okay, which again gets me to the point that we're not even at that point. So I know you want us to tell you what other issues might be out there, but I don't even think we're at the point where we can review the project enough to let you know what those are.
I mean, I, yeah, I'd second that. I mean, I think that it feels like one of the situations where I appreciate the update because I think it it's helped us to have this discussion and make sure that we understand what the issue is going to be before us and not before us in January. Um, I know we're going to open this up to public comment. And so if there's any public comment, that's going to be useful, but in terms of being able to say, you know, specifically what what we other issues there might be under like the recreation under the special permit, I don't think we're in a position to to know enough to to know.
Correct. I think I think even one of the items, I'm sorry, one of the items was like the natural resources, which we mitigated the issue with them. So we're outside of the issue with the natural resources. Uh, we had one area what that we uh work in and we repaired that issue. And took and mitigated that. So I'm not sure, you know, that that's been resolved as far as that space that was used, but you know, that we we encroached on.
And and that'll be a comment that the director will have to verify. So at this point, I'd recommend the um that the board continue this to January fourteenth um at seven twenty?
Do we? Is it? I mean, I don't disagree, Elizabeth, except can we, is there any public, I mean, we somebody may have shown up for to comment on it, so.
Great. Let's uh let's open it up for public comments.
Caroline, can hello?
Yeah, hi, we can hear you.
Hi, uh, Beren Kamjeen uh from ninety nine Williams Road. And I just wanted to um give some feedback about um some misrepresentation and sort of what I feel is a moving starting line uh that's being presented here uh that isn't actually accurate. And I understand that some of these this may uh not be applicable until they sort out all of the other um issues um in advance, but the framing of the argument that it's just an additional two hundred uh cubic yards of soil uh that they need a permit for misrepresents sort of how we got here um and what has occurred prior uh to change the site conditions. It wasn't just removal of soil, it was massive excavation or regrading that's already changed the topography substantially. Uh, and they only stopped removing soil after the town uh was notified that they were trucking soil uh off the site. Uh, and this number even of uh twelve hundred cubic yards uh by their engineers' own admission uh is just a rough estimate. Uh, because I think he said at the meeting, why not? Um, I I think that given that um topsoil was to be stripped and replaced and it's been trucked offsite and now the application states, we know topsoil is being proposed to be removed. Doesn't address that the topsoil already has been stripped and removed and not replaced. And so I, you know, there's a lot of these other issues subsequent that I understand it may be premature to get into, but sort of having observed this process, see them uh go through the steps of clear cutting four acres, doing significant excavation work without any permits and then resisting efforts from town officials to verify what they were doing. And now representing this in a way that looks like the starting line is now the existing conditions as they've been modified, rather than evaluating this uh from the existing conditions when the project commenced uh without any of the proper permitting or approvals or evaluations of alternative sites, environmental impact or any of the other things and the topography and all the other, because had they gotten their way, they would have removed sixty thousand cubic yards of soil uh without any approval or without any notification to uh butters or towns staff or officials. Uh, and it's daunting uh to to consider uh where this would have been if they hadn't been ordered to stop and by the town and by the NRC violations, which again, they did not allow NRC representation uh to visit the site and were resistant to any efforts enforcement.
Thank you. Uh, I think we note those comments and we also have a letter from you, at least one or two in the record.
Yeah, I know. I I I know that, you know, again, I I'm I just, it's it's um, as I stated, I'm happy to provide any additional information that may be happy, that may be helpful. I don't want to inundate you with information that's extraneous or irrelevant if they don't can't comply with, you know, the the bylaws or and the other uh requirements from engineering and water and sewer. But I do want to express that this whole process has been, the last year has been just absolutely unbelievable in terms of uh, you know, we've lived uh in on this ru- road since two thousand and three and we've had interactions with the country club, but never like this. And uh, this whole process has been really eye opening and 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 concerning. And I apologize for taking so much time.
No, thank you. It's helpful. Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, go ahead.
I I I do have a a quick on uh on uh material that that might be helpful for us to uh to look at this uh project next time around.
Yeah, let me just have a comment officially.
Okay, sorry.
So it's closed. So, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So we got an irrigation pond plan that shows it a lot of grading. And it's, I I think a few sections through uh a couple, three sections at least through this plan would be helpful to see what's what's existing and what's going to happen with the with the area in terms of um adding soil and and just in general, uh, the moving of soil as indeed that that big amount of soil that was going to be taken off now will stay out and uh stay on the property. So we just, I think, looking at the criteria for a special permit, it might be, it might be helpful for us to look at what uh what they're doing. Just, you know.
Yeah.
How how they're modifying uh the earth to.
Right.
So.
So when they come back to us, the specific thing that would be helpful, once they've gone through everyone else.
Yeah. And, and just to sort of preview how I'm thinking about this too, at least on the earth removal piece. Is, you know, does a retroactive permit make sense for us to grant here? Why would that be the remedy for earth removal that was done in violation of the bylaw? Number one. And number two, if I look at, you know, so the seven, five, three factors, one says the volume proposed for removal does not exceed the minimum practical removal required to accomplish, you know, the, the plan, we're now being told that, hey, we don't actually need to remove any earth to do what we needed to do. So how can there be an argument that, oh yeah, we actually, we needed to remove that, you know, twelve hundred cubic yards, but actually we don't need to remove any earth to, to accomplish our plan. I, I, I mean, I, I think there's sort of a contradiction there that makes it hard for me to see how we're going to get around the bylaw provisions to approve an earth removal permit. Uh, a, a, and it sort of takes me back to, you know, the, what the appropriate thing to do here is sort of remedy the, the bylaw violation, not grant a permit to retroactively cure it. So that, that, that's where I'm at. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy to sort of be, uh, I'm happy for that position to kind of be addressed by the applicant, but I think I need to hear sort of a, a solid reasoning behind it, um, to get me comfortable.
I agree, Robbie, and I would go further and say seven point five point three point two and point three also need to be addressed. So I, I share your concerns. Um, so I guess if you, unless there's any questions, any more questions from the applicant, I think we should just continue this until January, since I'm sure you've heard everything we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. We're also, I mean, so I just wanted to just, so the question you said, um, I think it's Robbie, it's that you're, you're saying the two hundred cubic yard, you're, you're, you want to address the two hundred extra cubic yards, is that?
Yeah, I, I, I think if you're, if you're going to ask for a sort of retroactive permit to cover what was done, you, you've sort of got a tough road to hoe. And, you know, I think, I think you got to really think through how you're going to present that and argue that, because, you know, as Elizabeth said, it's, it's all three sections of that, of that pertinent bylaw. And, you know, I, I, I think it's going to be tough. Uh, so, you know, just, just want to give you the time to prepare for that.
Yeah, I guess I'm, when you say it's going to be tough, I guess I'm a little, I guess I would need a little bit of understanding. I'm not sure what, I, I maybe I, I've missed something. So I apologize if I have. I don't have, I don't have the documents in front of me of the seven point five point three point two. I don't have that. So I'll read.
Right, yeah. And, and I think it's just sort of an indication, like you, you really got to go look at those by law subsections and, and think about, you know, are you going to convince us that, uh, yeah, that to make those findings.
Yeah, Robbie, I think I'm, I'm understanding you. So Greg, we can, uh, we can speak about
Yep.
what we're talking about here.
Yep, all good.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Um, so we're going to continue. It was till seven fifteen, did you say, Elizabeth, our next hearing? Seven twenty?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty. All right. Does someone want to make that motion?
Yeah, I can do it. Uh, move that we continue the hearing for the concrete country club, special permit under section seven point five, eleven point six of the zoning bylaw for construction of an irrigation pond requiring the removal of soil. I won't say the number here because it seems to be less said, two, two forty-six Old Road to Nine Acre Corner. To, excuse me, our, January fourteenth, I believe, at seven fifteen, seven twenty.
Second.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Right.
Mr. Kinnaman's.
Hi.
They curse more. I. Great, thank you. We'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, you too. Um, great. On to seven fifteen, thirteen B Commonwealth Avenue. That's Patrick Cleary, right?
Uh, correct.
Hello.
I am getting a message that says cannot, cannot start my video because host has stopped it. Start my video. Great. Good evening.
Evening. Um, so we're here, we received the planning board recommendation. Um, is there anything you want to add? To what we received? Questions from the board. Um, I think the only issue that I saw was the, the question of making every, all the utilities electric, which is something that we are not authorized to require, correct, Elizabeth?
Correct. You, you are not, but it was, uh, the planning board's hope that the applicant would, um, between then and now, look into that further and, um, there was a strong, uh, strong recommendation from the planning board that, um, the building be all electric and, um, additionally that EV charging station be provided for the tenants in the parking lot.
And the applicant says?
Sure. So a couple of things. Um, we have, uh, we definitely appreciate the push to go a hundred percent electric. Um, we have spent a lot of time talking with, uh, industry experts, engineers, architects, property managers. It actually is a good time to do that because we are interviewing, you know, our architect unfortunately, um, passed, so we are interviewing new architects, uh, to take this through, um, uh, building permits. We're interviewing property managers. We're interviewing, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection engineers. So all these people are very much incentivized to tell us what is best for the project, um, and not, you know, push a certain agenda, um, knowing that, uh, they could be with us for quite some time and, and have, uh, have a lot to answer to in the years to come. Um, each person that we've talked with has been consistent in terms of saying that in terms of upfront initial construction costs for electric versus gas, electric will most likely be either equal or less in terms of upfront cost, um, in construction. Um, and believe me, you know, not dealing with a, a utility during, uh, construction is something that I would certainly jump at, because, uh, they can be brutal, uh, to get out to the site. Every one of them, however, said that, um, in terms of long-term operational annual ongoing expenses to the project, electric is substantially more expensive, um, for, you know, residents or, you know, to the property owner if we were to end up paying, you know, for the residents. This project is already about three times more expensive than the initial project that we, um, had gotten approved through special permit and, uh, site plan approval, um, back in two thousand and thirteen with Brookside Square. And at this moment in time, it, it just is, um, very difficult for us to agree to a condition that commits us a hundred percent to go electric. What I will say is philosophically, we are totally on board with sustainability and, um, you know, the, the need to be environmentally friendly. That's one of the main reasons that we develop, um, you know, mixed use, multifamily properties in village centers, next to transit oriented, you know, modes of, of public transportation. In, in fact, there's not much more, uh, that you can do on a sustainability level than, than build the kind of building that, that we are, um, proposing. So we will continue to study this and, um, you know, if, if we can see our way clear to doing a hundred percent electric, we will, you know, we will do our best, but it, it's not possible at this time, um, to commit, uh, to do it. That being said, now on EV charging stations, um, we have talked with, um, you know, again, a number of our consultants and what we would propose, um, is that we would do not one, but two electrical vehicle charging stations in the parking lot for, um, that would be dedicated to residents. What we would propose, however, is that, uh, during construction, we can build the underground conduits to this, to those spaces, but hold off actually placing the stations until there is actual resident demand. And the reason for this is at Brookside Square, it actually took four years for a resident to actually, you know, put their hand up and say, you know, I actually would like, or I need uh, a charging station. And what we would hate to do is actually put a charging station out there, possibly have it sitting there for four years locked, you know, and go along with, with all the complaints that we're going to get, um, you know, from the public not being able to use it.
To that point, if you're going to run conduit, are you only going to run two? I mean, if the demand is ends up being more than that, does it make more sense to run more conduit?
I mean, at this point, we were just looking at, I mean, we're asked to do one charging station. Uh, we are looking at doing two, um, the locations, um, if, if you wouldn't mind sharing the screen with me, I can show you the locations that, you know, we're looking at. Um, there's a couple of options available to us that, uh, you know, we'd like to keep open. Um, I don't know if, if my screen can be shared.
Um, can I do that? Oh, yeah, okay. Oh. I think that's me, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, that's okay. I'll, um, I can bring it up. I mean, I guess the point is just that it's, if you're building in flexibility to go more electric, it seems running conduit would be an easy way to do it. For, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, so where I proposed, yeah.
Which one is it, Patrick?
Uh, we can use the first one, the, the first one. Um, yeah.
This one?
Uh, one down.
One down.
Yeah.
This one?
Um, one more down, I think.
This one.
There you go. So that one, um, shows where the tandem spaces are going to be, uh, placed. And what we would propose is that, um, on one of the tandem spaces close to the building, uh, we do conduit. And then we're also looking at right next to the tandem spaces, there's going to be one parking space. It's actually not shown in this because this is a, um, a demo, uh, a demolition, um, plan, but it would basically be in the northwest corner, exactly right where you are, uh, right where the cursor is. So we'd look at putting it there or we'd put it in the very top left hand area, right there. And the only reason why we don't know which location would work best is number one, cost of running the conduit underground, uh, whether it needs to be concrete encased or, um, or need to be, uh, you know, with, uh, you know, with crushed stone. Um, we also don't know if the, uh, you know, commercial tenants are going to be upset that, you know, the parking closest to the building, you know, is going to be taken up by a designated, you know, space for that. So we would ask for some flexibility in terms of where that one, um, you know, space would go, but we can commit to, um, a conduit for the, for one of the, uh, the tandem parking spaces.
So if, if you're running conduit to a, to one of those, not to the tandem space, but to the other, uh, location, that would actually be servicing two potential EV charging, uh, spaces, right? Because you're going to get conduit to one post and one post will get two charges.
Uh, quite possibly. I'm not sure.
Yeah, um, I mean, I'm not interested in telling them exactly where to put it. I would
Right.
might be just more about for your sake, running more if you need it later. But, um, anyway, yeah.
You know, my feeling has always been if, you know, um, you know, I said this at, at the last meeting and at, at the planning board, if the demand, you know, is there and it makes sense, we're going to want to put EV charging stations out there regardless of whether or not there's a condition for it.
Right.
But, you know, if there is a condition that's, you know, just like, you know, I'm, I'm saying that we will look at, you know, the hundred percent electric, um, you know, if there is a condition, you know, we would be agreeable to going with two rather than just one.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any comments from the board? Um, then I will go ahead and open it up to public comment. Any public comment? All right. Go ahead and close public comment. Um, no, I appreciate you. It, it sounds like a reasoned response that you gave on the electric. Obviously, you're going to be incentivized by your neighborhood and everyone in general to push for electric. So, um, I like the idea of, um, you committing at least to running that conduit for the two spaces. Um, anyone else?
And just ask a question because I wasn't clear right at the end, Patrick. Are you, um, are, are you, have you committed to do that so that we can put that in as a condition or do you, are you open to that condition? It was just a little hard for me to understand what the.
Uh, we would be willing to, uh, agree to a condition for two EV charging stations. Um, you know, it.
Conduit for two EVs.
Conduit for two charging stations that would be put in place once tenant demand is there, uh, resident tenant demand is there, with the location of the charging stations to be flexible.
I would, the only, um, change I would, it would be just conduit to two EV charging locations. Because it may end up, there'll be double posts and it'll be four stations, but so it's just two locations.
Yeah, I mean, I got, I gotta be honest, it's fine if we put it in as a condition. I don't think it really gets us much, but.
Yeah, but since he's willing to do it and it's, that you don't have to have everyone say, well, gee, they told us they were going to do X and now they're not doing X.
Yeah, that's true.
Elizabeth, if I knew it didn't matter, you know?
Listen.
I think it actually is helpful. I, I think the, I think the optics are nice and I think it is helpful to the application with, to have that condition in there. So I, I appreciate that that's, that's been offered.
Great.
All right. So the only other comment I can make is, um, the, the outcome of this whole conversation, um, will result in, uh, the, CMLP Energy Coordinator and the Sustainability Director will be putting together information that can be shared with project proponents and developers. At the initial phase, they come to have questions because, um, most, um, unless you, unless you work um, or no, unless you live in a community that has a municipal light plant, um, most everybody else is familiar and, um, architects, developers are familiar with either ever source, national grid. Um, and, uh, information has been provided from CL, CMLP that, um, our rates are lower. Um, it is cheaper. So in the long run, um, your electrical use is not going to be more expensive than the same project um, with ever source or national grid. So they will be putting together information that we can share um, at, in the beginning and upfront because, um, Concord and, um, you know, is different when it comes to electric use. So it is a good thing that's come out of it. So.
Yeah, no, no, that's great. It doesn't sound like it's a done deal that you won't go more electric or if, if that turns out to be worthwhile.
And, and I, and I actually want to second that, uh, having our house switched over to all electric, um, it's surprising how affordable it is.
Great. Anything else from the board?
I, I always say this, Elizabeth, use, but when you prepare the decision, is there also going to be a condition in there about the affordable housing? Being, I, I think it goes in the deed or is there, is there deed restriction or something that, that kind of?
Yes. So in the planning board's recommendation letter are conditions regarding the affordable housing, um, and the deed restrictions, um.
I know, I know it was discussed in the body. I just, I'm not sure I saw a condition specifically.
Okay. So well, now I have to look because, um,
I know I'm looking to, let's see, um, site work. And now I'm looking to, let's see, site work.
So I'm not, I am not seeing it write off either. So.
Yeah, I just think we want to make sure in the, in the decision draft that it's in there.
Yep, I will work with the Regional Housing Services Office. It, it does not require significant conditions. And in fact, I can tell you what the, what the condition will be, will be exactly similar to what the board issued for the mill run common PRD.
Yep.
And I can tell you.
No, I, I know there's some, there's sort of a standard way of putting it in there. Just wanted to, to flag it.
Providing to affordable, to. All right, well.
So it's prior to the issuance, the timing will have to be, I'll work out with the Regional Housing Services Director on, you know, a certain number of certificates of occupancy will be issued. Likely this will be a single certificate of occupancy for the whole entire structure. So it will be prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The applicant shall complete the construction of the affordable units finalized to the satisfaction of the town, all required documents for the affordable deed restricted units, including the affirmative fair housing marketing plan for both affordable units and record them with the middle sex south registry of deeds. So I will clarify with the Regional Housing Service Director, this is initially going to be a rental, correct, Patrick?
Correct, yes.
So there may be some additional language that needs to be in there since it is a rental. But I know for a certain she has the exact condition wording that needs to be done.
Got it. Thank you.
And what, what you quoted is what I'm used to working with as well. So that makes sense from my perspective.
Okay, any other comments? Be ready for a motion?
You know, I, I don't know if we want to go through the sort of findings the board is supposed to make since there's several bylaw provisions here, but you know, it seems that they're all easily been satisfied and were aligned with the recommendations in the planning board. You know, most of them I think relate to detriment to the neighborhood and in harmony with the intent of the bylaws and of course the special permanent provisions, you know, I, I think we can, you know, I, I certainly feel that we, we've met all of those and can make those findings easily here.
A good point, Robbie. And yes, I agree with what the planning board has said about that in their recommendation letter and also agree with their rationale for each of those.
So I, I agree the motion can be as simple as, you know, as far as, you know, accepting the recommendation and conditions as amended and adopting the findings that are referenced in the planning board's recommendation letter.
And then just adding in the electric charging, the conduit for two.
Right. So the conditions as amended tonight.
Okay. Jim, Tao, anyone?
Just say so moved or do you want me to go through it?
I like so moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. Akeris Moore. Hi. Great. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
What do we have? One set of minutes to approve?
Move approval.
I wasn't at the meeting, so.
I think you can still approve them.
Yep.
As odd, as odd as it sounds, you still can vote to approve them. Right.
You have to sign them too, Tao, so.
Oh, yeah, get signed that too. Yeah.
Great, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. Akeris Moore. Hi. Anything else? I, Elizabeth, I think that was a useful conversation we have with the planning board. Sounds like they are going to do some more work and come back to us if they have anything to ask us.
Yes. So they will, they will be talking, having their post-conversation discussion that they're meeting Tuesday night. So I will keep the board informed about, you know, as they move forward and will probably, if they do move forward with any amendment to the floor area ratio bylaw or other sections, I'm confident they will come back to the Board of Appeals for your input. But right now they need to do some homework.
Just a little. All right. Sounds good. Anyone have anything else?
Uh, just back to the the country club application, I, you know, it, right now it's under seven point five for the earth removal permit, but it sounds like there's also a sort of use recreational use extension special permit that they're going to be asking us to approve. It, I, I just kind of want to be clear about, you know, what requirements they're going to need to meet for that to think about them before the next meeting. So, you know, if there's, if there's a way we can sort of make it clear what they're applying for before January fourteenth, that, that would be very helpful.
Okay, I will, because you've, you've closed the discussion on that application tonight. So I will follow up with the board in an email and just kind of, I'll work with Ray. We can clarify what that process is.
Anything else? All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Merry, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
You're adjourning, you're adjourning. Eight fifteen.
At, at eight, eight, seven. Sure. Yeah. All right. Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, happy holidays. Bye bye.
Bye.